Yes, Mark.
So, right.
And you could, you could indicate that.
Don't worry about that.
They will do this. We'll start in there. I think it's coming.
Use their clocks.
Yep, they've got it all.
Follow this meeting to order.
No, you're good.
Of the Manasty City Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2022. Please rise for the pledge.
I just apply the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Here.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitliff?
No.
He is, he is present on the telephone.
Present, but not here.
And will not be participating.
And will not be participating.
No, he has, he is listening in on us.
He's listening, but.
Approval of agenda. At this time, the planning commission can take action to approve the November 3rd, 2022 agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick.
I'll second.
Second by Pam. Any discussion? Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Slawinski.
Chair.
That's scary.
So he answered for Schmansky too.
He did? Okay. She's throwing his curve over there. Okay. At this time, the chair will ask if any members have any conflicts of interest on the approved agenda items. None?
None.
No.
Okay, moving on. Approval of the minutes. At this time, the planning commission can approve the October 6th, 2022 meeting minutes and the October 20th, 2022 work session minutes.
Chair.
I'll make that motion. We accept the minutes from October 6th.
I'll second.
Marine for the October 6th and. I drew a blank again.
It's okay, Mark does the same thing.
I'm playing Mark now.
Mark, we're all right. Don't worry.
Shelley seconds.
Shelley made the second. Any discussion? This was just on the, you just made for the 20, the 6th minutes or did you make for both?
Both.
For both, okay.
The both.
No discussion? Let's take, take a vote, please.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
I'm so used to saying his name first. Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner? Could be one of those nights. Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Could be one of those nights.
Correspondence. Have we received any correspondence at all?
Um, no, not this month.
None. Okay. Onto the next item. Presentation by Mark Fetter from the Manasty County Historical Museum.
Uh, I don't know if I have a clicker. I'll try to ban free.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Very happy to be here this evening talking to you about all the activities that have been going on at the museum and I apologize to those who have heard this already today. Pam was present at the Lakeside Club meeting and I gave pretty much the same presentation to the Lakeside Club earlier today.
She'll correct you if you may.
You'll correct me if I, if I, if I, if I, if I make up any things that I didn't say at the meeting and then of course Commissioner Schmansky who heard this a couple of months ago at the city council meeting, but what the heck. I'm, uh, I'm very happy to be here this evening, like I said, um, been a lot of activity at the museum of late and so I'm just gonna kind of give you a brief summary of what we've been doing this past year and kind of what we do down there in general. So Katie, if you wanna go to the next slide. Some of these pictures are, I, I have in here are just of different buildings being constructed in Manasty and this one of course is where, is the Vogon what it looked like when it was being constructed. Just a really cool picture, so like that, you can, you can go, just keep on going until you get everything. So it's, so yes, so, um, I wear a lot of different hats throughout the course of, of the day and so, um, I'm involved, the museum is involved with a lot of different things and this is just a kind of overview of some of the things. One of the things that, that, that we do a lot, that I do a lot is I'm considered city staff on the Historic District Commission. I don't have a, a vote on the Historic District Commission, but I'm kind of more on retainer for historic purposes. So a lot of the things that we deal with is if, um, if Roger were to come in and say, hey, I bought the Ramsdale Building and I want to know all the history about it and all the photographs that you have, well, people would come down, you would come down to see me and I would research it for you or give you all the information I have, show you all the photographs I have of it, so you can know everything there that we have or that there is to know about the building. Who built it? Why was it built? So on and so forth. And so, so we deal a lot on the research side. So, um, we deal with that a lot when people come in and they want to know everything there is to know. We do that free of charge because of the city does appropriate money to us every year and so, um, so we try to make that a priority for people who are coming into the Historic District and purchasing a property and, and want to know all there is to know about their specific property. As I mentioned, we do that primarily through newspaper articles, abstract books, maps, photographs, the works. Sometimes it takes an hour, sometimes it takes a couple of days, sometimes it takes a couple of weeks depending on, on variety of, a variety of different factors. I was, I like it when they're really easy as we all do, but always a lot of fun to do and you get to meet a lot of, um, interesting people. Katie, if you wanna, if you want to, um, hit, go, go to the next couple of slides there. Yeah, so earlier or throughout the year, throughout the end of 2021 into 2022, um, we were involved with a lot of different projects. Of course, the former Reedmore Bookstore, the former Music Vault, or what was going to be the Music Vault, uh, people came in and they want to know all about the history of that building and I was able to help them out with it. Of course, all the happenings at the old Hotel Northern, which we hope will, will come to fruition at some point in time. Those folks I worked very closely with over the last, or last year. The same couple, a husband and wife purchased the Michigan Bell Telephone Company building, Chippewa Auto Sales building and came down and spent some time with me and we were able to figure things out for them. Of course, there were some issues with City Hall that, the building itself that we were able to work with the city staff on to get that figured out, mainly I think around the roof over here. Library, there's a lot of exterior issues going on with that building and will be in the next year and so we worked very closely with them. There was I think an issue at a special meeting a couple of weeks ago regarding the parcel split for City of Milwaukee and Ken Brown that was there worked very closely with Mr., Mr., Mr. Ken there who, um, who helped us out or who we helped out to, in order to figure all that stuff out. And of course, the Hampton Inn area, not in the Historic District Commission, neither is Manasty Lake, of course, but we were able to help the people doing some surveying there, figure out what used to be there, where it used to be located and so on and so forth. So, um, always very interesting and always kind of fun to go on a wild goose chase with all that stuff, so. So those are just some of the things that we do for the Historic District Commission as well as, um, I'm, as staff, I'm able to approve or not approve of different colors on the buildings. I can approve signage and a couple other things that people don't have to wait for the next meeting, they can just kind of get that approved by me and if I have an issue with it, then I can go to the Historic District Commission and ask their thoughts on it as well. So work very closely with the planning department when different topics arise and so always, always an adventure. First, of course, the first congregational church being constructed. And in regards to the museum, from August 2021 to August 2022, we had just almost 1,700 visitors. It's, it's pretty normal for the most part. Previous year, we saw a huge uptick because that was of course the last, or the next summer after the pandemic and after everything being closed down, people just wanted to get out and, and, and so we had a huge uptick in numbers and it kind of, kind of flattened out by the end of August of 2021 and then into the August of this year. But a very standard number, but also par for the course for the most part. Researchers, we do a lot of genealogy at the museum and so this is when people come in, if you want to know all about your great grandfather who lived and worked in Manasty, people would come into the museum and we, through our index files, our index cards, our genealogy records, we're able to help them find all that information and dig through the old newspapers and, and find out where some of these people are buried and what cemetery and the location of those plots. People come from all over the country, some people come from, from different countries to the museum to actually spend some time there and spend a couple of days in Manasty in order to do all this. As I mentioned at the talk I gave previously today, about three weeks ago, I had a gentleman come from San Diego primarily just to come to Manasty and work with him for about three days to find out all the, all the information about his great grandparents and what house they lived in and, and where they worked and so you get to meet a lot of interesting people and you get to learn a lot about their families. So, so people come from all over to, to do research in Manasty here, believe it or not. We do several exhibits throughout the year. This year, we did one on, on old scrapbooks that we were able to, we found in our basement and so some of these are just kind of an idea of what people used to collect and cut out of the old newspapers and magazines and so that was a lot of fun to dig through all that stuff and had a good response from that. Also gave several lectures throughout the community. I think I gave, I've given six or seven this year so far and so, um, that's, the topics depend on, you know, what the group wants me to talk about. And of course, I also gave about two tour groups. Katie, if you want to hit the next couple of slides there. This was one of the tour buses or may not, or I might not have had anything to do with it, it might just be a picture of a bus on River Street, I don't know what. I do have proof because I am, I did take a selfie with it. Group came from Indiana and they wanted a tour, both of them came from Indiana, wanted tours of Manasty and wanted to know about the history of the area and so I gave them a, a two hour tour of, of the city and then we ended up at the museum and I was able to show them around there. As I mentioned, again, at the previous meeting, it's always kind of fun to be going down Cedar Street and seeing people walk their dogs and do double takes as this big Greyhound bus is, is trying to make the turn from, on Cedar onto Forest Street and people want to know what's going on, it's always kind of fun. People get a good question about that. But yeah, so we did do a couple of those this year as well. This is of course the construction of the Hound Flavors in 1976. We've been involved with, the museum's been involved with a number of different projects this year. One of them is 99 Pine Street. This is where the former, or the home, uh, the former home of Ray and Anne Mae Smith, currently belongs to their family. They are in the process of attempting to get the house turned into kind of a artist retreat slash house museum and when we drive by this house or people who don't know the history of it, a lot of people might just think, oh, it's just a tiny little house that's sitting on the, on the, on the bottom of a hill, but there's a lot of history in this house. The Smiths moved in, the Smiths moved in in the late 1920s and they, I think I have that right, late 1920s, early 1930s and they, um, they, they of course were a very well-regarded African American family in, in, in Manasty and had a large family and, um, they all lived inside that, that small house. But they were also sheltered, uh, other folks of African American, African Americans who came to Manasty, people like James Earl Jones spent time in that house, the Harlem Globetrotters spent time in that house as they would come and do their road shows all throughout Michigan as well as many other people. And so with the, their children getting a little up in age, they want to make sure that that legacy is carried on and so we work with students from Eastern Michigan University to, um, know, find out the history of this house and, um, and the neighborhood and the surroundings and so that was a really fun project and, um, we did that in April, we spent a weekend in April doing that and then a little time in August to do that as well. So that's been a fun project so far and I hope it comes to fruition at some point in time. Katie, if you want to, uh, keep going, yeah, keep going there. Some of you may or may not have seen the, um, the recent Historic Walking Tour booklet. This is I think the third or fourth, third iteration of that over the last eight or nine years. This is 150 pages and has several different components that the other walking tour booklets haven't had, primarily the involvement with the Little, the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians who played a very prominent role in this book because they're the indigenous peoples here and they deserve to have their history be told along with how the city grew. So they played a huge role in, in getting this book, um, I think a very well-rounded history of the area. This was done through a grant through the USDA and the Visitor Center and I, we all worked very closely, myself, Right Side Design Group who, who did the layout and as well as the visitor center to make this thing a reality. So it turned out very good, we think. One of the cool aspects of it, if you want to go again, hit the button again there Katie, is, um, one more time. One more time.
One more time.
It's thinking about it.
Okay, well, I'll keep on going then. So, okay, well, I didn't know I had this many pictures in here. Here we go. One of the cool aspects of this is that this has six or seven different big photographs and you can scan the QR code and it'll take you right to where this picture was originally taken, so you can have a now and then, uh, a view of, of what the property looks like today. There are also several walking tours, so the visitor to Manasty can just pick it up and, you know, start looking around town and downtown and all throughout the, the west and east side mansions and residences. There were, there should be within the next couple of months, a condensed version of this, a 90-minute walking tour with, with a fold-out map. So if you've only got a couple hours because your, your significant others playing golf or they're shopping and you want to know just the, just the tidbits of history in Manasty, you can take that map and look around and not have to carry around this big booklet because this can be a little overwhelming to people who just have a passing interest in, in, in local history. But it turned out pretty well, we're, we're pretty, pretty happy with how it turned out for the most part, so. And, and, and another portion of this is the Origins Walk, which we dedicated here in the middle of October. This was another component of the USDA grant and we worked once again closely with the Little River Band, Right Side Design Group and the Visitor Center in order to get the information, select the people who would be honored or talked about for the Origins Walk. There were about 20 individuals from throughout the county and to find out their information, their bio, so to speak, as well as, um, a couple other aspects of the project as well. If, if you haven't had a chance to, to do the walk yet, it's right on the end of, it's right on the corner of First and Cherry Street and so just hang a right and it's, it's right there, you can walk down, there's a couple of different sculptures and then you can walk down to the actual walk where you can learn about some of the people that we highlighted. So I certainly urge you, if you haven't, here's a couple of pictures of it. So it all turned out relatively well for the most part. And here's a question I, I've gotten a lot this year. What's going on with that Waterworks Building on First Street? Have had a lot of calls and a lot of interest, of course, when anything like that happens in, in town, everyone driving by has questions and wants to know what's going on. Back in, back in October of 2021, um, we drafted a letter to the city stating that we have opted to, uh, to vacate the Waterworks Building. The museum actually has been a tenant in that building since 1954. We've never owned it, the city's always owned it. The building was originally constructed and it was finished construction in 1883 and this is where the whole entire city water supply used to run out of. There were pipes and boilers and all this cool machinery inside the building. In 1947, the city went from that steam-powered system to an electric-powered system and this meant that this building was obsolete. So it sat vacant for a couple of years until the early 1950s when a couple of individuals who wanted to start a museum inquired about it and the city basically said you can have the building or you can be inside the building, but you have to get rid of all the machinery. So they got all the machinery out of it and they scrapped it all, made money and then were able to start the museum inside the building. So it's become more or less kind of a storage facility over the years for the museum, for the museum. We've been open on kind of a volunteer basis, not always able to keep it staffed because of a volunteer basis and the building needed a lot of work, so we had a historic architect do a study of it and she decided, she came to the conclusion that there's, needs some serious structural, uh, issues. There are some ser, serious structural issues with the building and it'd probably be best if we vacated it, so we made the decision to do that. And it wasn't an easy one, but, um, but so we decided to vacate it, inventoried everything that was inside the building. Our committee decided to weed through it and figure out which things are of intrinsic historic value to the museum and the community and then the other items we offer to all the other communities, all that have museums like Bear Lake and Brethren and Marilla and even some folks from Lake County and they came and, and we were able to donate or long-term loan several items to them, so it all turned out really well. We are primarily out of the building. There are a couple of items left over that we hope to kind of have up for sale or, or an auction here. We hope to have it on the lawn of the Waterworks in the springtime if all goes well, but other than that, we're, we're pretty much out of it and it's been a, a big process, but we're, 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 we're glad to, we're hope to see this building continue to be a part of the community for years to come because it'd be a shame if, if it wasn't. Go ahead.
When you were talking about the structural issues, is it the interior structure?
It's the interior structure.
The exterior?
Not the exterior, not the exterior. There are some foundational issues with, 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 with the building, primarily from the inside basement, some significant water damage. Things need to be sound there, of course, in order for the public to.
I knew the stairs, stairs in some of the walkways.
Yes, yes, yeah, absolutely, yes, yeah. And, and there's no heating, there's no plumbing, you know, everything needs to be, so it's, it's just kind of a shell of a building, but.
Beautiful building.
It's a beautiful building, yes. Yeah, Roger.
With that, if you don't mind, with that thought in mind, you pulled out of it, it's empty, empty shell. So what are we gonna do, let it deteriorate?
I don't know. That'll be up to, that'll be, that'll be up to the city to, to figure out. I, I met with, with, with Bill, Bill Gamble, manager and I think moving forward, what they, what they're planning is to meet with architects from the State Historic Preservation Office, so they can, what they do is they offer services where they draw plans up and then they take those plans to developers to see if it's something that, that may or may not, may or may not work for them. You know, for the museum to put, or the city to put $2 to $3 million is what we, what we were estimated into that building, even as a museum, gosh, you guys know what, what Manasty's like in about mid-January or early February, there's not a lot of activity going on down here, so how, how you gonna, how you gonna pay for that unless you have a huge endowment, you know?
Didn't they throw a roof on there last?
The city put a roof on there and that, those were, those were monies that were earmarked for capital improvement. All the city-owned buildings were earmarked for that money and so that was one of them, so they just, I, they just went ahead with what they had, had planned for it. That was the first new roof that had been put on, I believe, since 1973.
Yeah, well, I thought that it looked like they were making improvements, so I thought, well, maybe.
Yeah.
But then I've read in the paper, you're, everybody's pulling out.
Yeah, yeah, it was just a roof that was earmarked for that, that money for it.
So where's the permanent? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
Where's the permanent museum home now?
That's, that's at 425 River Street and that's been, we've been in that building since 1961 and the reason that the museum moved to that building is because the Waterworks could only be open a couple of months out of the year because once again, there was no heating in it or anything like that, no plumbing, so then they were able to get the Lyman Building and then that's a building that the museum actually owns and doesn't, is not a tenant or anything like that, so.
Did they donate it to the library? The building?
Are you talking about the Lyman Building? That was actually purchased for a very minimal fee from the family of Frank White, who was the owner of the building and the main pharmacist down at the Lyman Store. All right.
Well, thank you. I mean, I mean.
Just a few more, just, just one or two. I could keep going, you know?
I believe you.
Of course, we're also involved with the fixing up or restoration of the North Pierhead Lighthouse. This was something that my, the former, my predecessor, Steve Harold, kind of spearheaded in 2011 when ownership of the lighthouse came under the city's purview and then the museum signed a 50-year concession agreement with the city to maintain, preserve the lighthouse. Phase one of that project was getting it painted. We did that in 2016. If anyone remembers what it looked like prior to that, it was just a rust bucket pretty much. Now it's very, it's, at least people can go and get their engagement pictures by it, you know, and it looks really nice. So that's what people really want is at least it looks nice and it certainly turned out great. Phase two of that project was to get monies to fix up the inside of it because of course, you know, all the, all the steel and it's starting to rust and starting to thin out and there's a lot of lead paint and, you know, the, it's basically just a series of ladders and hatches and it just gets skinnier as you go up to the top, of course. But of course, that's not, that's not safe for the public to even take a tour of it, so we're still in the process of raising money for that. Of course, as I'm sure you've heard from other developers or other people, that the costs have skyrocketed over the last couple of years and so we're, we're in the process right now getting some grant funds available to, to, to assist us in that. So that's an ongoing thing, but we hope to get that going here within the next year or so.
Sure. I just talked to some boys this summer doing it. We did a lighthouse tour up Lake Superior and, uh, what was it, not DNR, was it DNR? The boys were painting it, they just finished painting, uh, just out of, heading north out of Brimley.
Oh, okay. Oh, for goodness sakes.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, really nice, but now they said they were gonna work inside, but don't, aren't there funding? Isn't there funding?
There is fund, there is funding and there's more grant funding available. We, I sent away the biennial report that we have to send to the National Park Service and I'm working with her, our contact there to, she gave me some more grant funding sources and everything like that, so we hope that.
Yeah, they were, they looked nice, really, a nice bit white.
Yeah, a lot of lighthouse aficionados out there, so.
Yeah, yeah, there.
You talked about, you used to have all the old aerial photos there?
We do, yes.
Still have them?
We still do, yeah, 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 we do, yeah. They, the kind of the, the county gives them to us after a period, or they did do it at a period of time, so we have those hard copies, you know, all those big ones that you, you need about three people to, you know, to get out of, out of the drawer, but yeah, we still have all those.
I'll begin with you later, I gotta look some stuff.
Sure, 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 absolutely, yeah, yeah, let me know, I'd be happy, happy to help, yeah.
The whole county, all the county.
Yeah, the entire county, yeah, yeah, the entire county. They range from I think the 1950s, you know, there's, I think at least two a year, maybe there's about six years altogether, you know, or something like that as, every decade or so on, so. Any other questions for? All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for, thanks, thanks for having me.
And please thank your staff as well, because they really do a great job.
Well.
We do so much good things.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a staff of ones these days. Volunteer, well, volunteers are, are wonderful, yeah, we have, we have, not, not as many as there, as, as we used to have, but we got a couple of really hardcore people who come in a couple of times a week, one, at least once a week and, and, and help us out or are able to run a little interference for me when people come in and need to show, they can show them around the museum and stuff like that, so, so yeah, yeah, they're hard workers, yeah, but.
I'd like to thank you too. I'm on the board of the Council Beijing.
Oh, yes, yes, very much, yeah.
Very good to us coming and giving us talks about.
Sure. Oh, yes.
And everybody looks forward to.
That's great, that's great, that's great, yeah, always happy to do that kind of stuff, yeah, yeah, always a lot of fun to do.
And Ray Fortier still doesn't come down.
Ray is not, does not come down anymore, he, he is in the, the, the medical care nowadays, yeah, yeah. He was one of the most, Ray spent more time down there than me for, for a couple of years, you know? But wonderful guy and we certainly miss his.
Yeah, he was. No, okay, thank you.
Can you tell you where half the stuff in the building is?
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. He give people a good, a good hour and a half tour sometimes. I mean, these people are still here, Ray's still giving these people a chance to go These people are still here, Ray's still giving these people a chance to go around, but always did a wonderful job and we miss him. Thanks a lot, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, street vacation request to Daniel Saylor, 114 Pine Street.
Yes, so we received a street vacation request at the address indicated. I did not, well, I did receive one written comment, which I had emailed to all of you. And as you can see from that, I don't think they fully understood the nature of the request. But that was the one written comment received and then I did receive a couple phone calls just inquiring what a street vacation was. But that was about it and then we do have Daniel here. I don't know if you guys want to hear anything from him, but this one is a pretty straightforward request.
Did we, did we tell the lady that sent the letter, explain to her what she was questioning?
She didn't leave a phone number, so I haven't had a chance to get back to her, but I'm, I think I'm just gonna write her a letter back and explain to her that, you know.
So she's aware of.
Oh, yeah?
I live next door.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I will get in contact with her and make sure she understands.
You know, she wrote the letter, at least she can answer it.
Right.
Alright. Yeah, well, if it's straightforward, I'll approve the motion.
Daniel, have anything he wants to add on anything?
Do you want to step up to the podium?
Is there's anything he wants to add?
Yeah.
No, I've never done one of these before, so I guess I'm not sure what to say, but we've my wife and I moved here about five years ago. We bought the house from Pat Gustad. I don't know if anybody knows Pat, but when we bought it, even both realtors weren't fully sure where the property line was and Pat, she's been maintaining the lot since, I guess, 1973 or so, so it was a little fuzzy and we just found out about a year ago where the actual line was, which it turns out is actually about four feet into our porch, so the house, it's a little funny too, so.
You didn't have Bob do the surveying?
No, actually, the survey is interesting. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but there's a large hill behind me.
Oh, yeah.
And we actually own the whole hill, which I'm not sure I'm really happy about. But the survey that we did for the proposed vacation is just a nice straight line from the bottom of our property line at the hill, which goes over to, pretty conveniently, to Lee Truck's property line. It's just a nice big rectangle. But, you know, we've been maintaining it and mowing it and treating it like it's our own. I actually put a little decorative fence kind of over the border, just because I didn't know at the time. But we have four kids and the house is a lot smaller than when we bought it and it'd be nice to just officially know that we're not gonna get in trouble for putting a swing set or something.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And if we happen to sell the house at some point, you know, it's just nice for the new owners to know that it's theirs and so we thought we'd officially, you know, just, but I didn't know they could do that, actually. Somebody told us the city had the opportunity to do that, so.
Oh, we can do anything.
It doesn't end here, but.
Well, yeah, yeah, no, I've got the checklist, I've seen the whole process and it seems a lot easier than I thought it would be and it was just really like, oh, great, if we could.
A lot of these are easy, some of them are not.
Yeah.
I know that for a fact.
So Saylor, do you know what your tax burden will be on that additional property?
I don't, I mean, it's, we, it would actually be the third lot that we would own because of our property. Our, our house is the small lot and then next to us at the edge of the hill used to be another house, I guess, it burned down, so I don't know like how it's proportioned out, but I assume it'd be worth it, you know, just for the peace of mind and property value. And my wife's a photographer who, she owns the place at Downtown Delight, so if you've been in, that photography studio's hers and she's moving into the briny building to, for a bigger space. Actually, I'm really sore for moving furniture, so. Sorry if I sound a little out of it, but, but she's got like dreams of putting a little shed for, you know, personal photo work or whatever over there and it would just, you know, it'd be nice to be able to do that and not have to worry about it. So it'd be worth it, whatever. Whatever it is, I'm sure it wouldn't be significant because we're not talking about, I think, too large of a property. I think the actual lot does go down the length of that sidewalk that kind of butts up against those houses, but the survey that we do doesn't include that. We don't really, it doesn't make sense to us to try to vacate that whole sidewalk. We just sort of like the rectangular shape that kind of goes up to our lot line, so hopefully it's not inconvenient for the other houses on, I guess it's that alley.
There's not any, Katie, there's not any pipelines or anything in near that we'd have to be concerned about or right of way from the city.
Nope, DPW provided comment, they have no objections. They have no utilities in this right of way nor any plans for future extensions of the street work, so.
There you go.
Just that sidewalk is so old out there, it's been there forever.
Yeah.
Right.
Back, probably when Roger was still chairman, it was probably put in.
Our survey didn't have that sidewalk, but I mean, if they would like us to go over that extra two feet up to Lee's property, it's not too big a deal to us, I guess.
And I think, yeah, really, Lee would obtain the sidewalk with him obtaining the bottom half of that property. So the sidewalk wouldn't be your concern.
Yeah, and actually, when we started the process, we're friends with Lee, we talked to him a little bit because we knew it would be divided in half and he said right away, he is, his yard's already pretty huge with his extra lot in the front, he's not interested in mowing more, so he said he would sign a deed and give it to us, he doesn't care at all. So that part's pretty straightforward too, so.
Pretty much getting the entire 66 wide.
That's the plan, yeah, I mean, Lee, I realize maybe would have wanted it and that would have been great too if he did, but he very quickly told me when he was, I stopped him on his bike one day and he just quickly said.
Yeah, because normally on the vacations, they're splitting between the landowners on those vacations.
Well, you might want to make sure you get that in writing if there's any legal effect because if he sells or something, the next person may say, hey, isn't that mine or I want that or something.
Well, I think one of the papers I got in the initial packet is actually a deed form that the other owner would sign. I think they just included it because they knew we were gonna talk about that. And that's actually one of the reasons that we, our survey stopped at that rectangle rather than going down the sidewalk because now he's the only one that would be affected by it instead of two or three other houses down the sidewalk that I'm sure they wouldn't care, but it'd be awkward to know that sidewalk's owned.
The survey shows the entire street.
Yeah.
Entire width of the street.
What's that?
The survey shows the entire width of the street.
Okay.
Scary part when I can read surveys like.
It was a big surprise to us. I mean, all of the property markers, the corners, were not at all where we expected them to be, so it was, it's kind of neat to know. And actually, I'm a, I'm a history teacher and a professor of history in Grand Rapids, so the other thing there was really interesting to go down there and get all that information about the house. I've dug up some weird stuff over in the other lot when I've been working on it, so.
Well, don't see the man right there. He'll set you up on where you was, who was, lived there and how many people died right there.
Well, that's, I do plan to and we do have all the purchase records going. I think we're only the fourth family to own it since it was built, which is pretty cool. And so we feel kind of a personal responsibility to not let our four under-five kids destroy it.
They will, they will.
I gotta tell you, I live right down the street from you.
Oh, do you?
And your kids are the cutest kids.
So you don't mind the screaming?
They're, they're, they're very, um, let me see, how can I say this?
I've heard it all, it's okay.
Oh, no, no.
Dark kids?
They are adorable kids, but they are very self-aware and very opinionated.
Oh, jeez, so you've talked to them?
We'll serve them well in life.
Yeah, I wanna hear more about this, actually. Oh, you know our house?
I live at the corner of Fifth and Pine, I'm the one with the Husky.
Oh, okay.
Just why I talk to you.
Okay, that's, we've talked several, I'm sorry, sometimes it's dark. So my daughter, my younger daughter, Olive, if you know our house, her bedroom is the one above the porch and we found out this summer we need to open the top of the window and not the bottom because stroll.
Oh, no.
And I found that out the next day from my other daughter that shares the room with her, so. And somehow not fall in 12 feet or whatever the concrete, so.
Does she want, she gets older?
Yeah. Well, that's.
That's when you have to have the bars on the windows.
I'm sort of sad that Pat replaced all the windows. I wish they had the ones that don't open because it was funny later.
Child lock on the windows.
They were very cute for Halloween, by the way.
Oh, we did come to your house, yeah, thank you. They did well. This is the first, this is our fifth year here and this is the first normal Halloween with good weather we've had, so.
Yeah, it was a beautiful.
I've never seen a Halloween where it was so nice. I've been here for 70 years.
I enjoyed it, yeah.
A lot of kids at my house.
Yeah, I do.
It's a great location. I actually bought a mechanic, I planned to hand it out and then we just ended up out all night, so I have all of it at the house. So it was a good time. The first year we were here, it was fun, but it was a little cold and then COVID and everything and it's been all rainy, so everybody's all enough to enjoy it and had a great time, so. And we had Husky, we moved in, so we kind of, I don't know if you ever met her, but so we kind of bonded with your dog a little bit now that I'm thinking about it. And she looks just like our dog that died, so it's always a little emotional walking by your house. But anyway, I'm getting.
I believe that's it, isn't it, Bobby?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sure, thank you very much, sir. Thanks a lot.
Good luck with whatever you want to do. Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the.
Well, we're still in the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing is, yeah, that's right.
Anything else for the public hearing? Anyone else out there?
That's what I mean.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing and move on to public comment on the agenda items.
Alrighty.
Anybody from the public got anything to say on the agenda? You have three minutes to talk.
Okay.
Oh, Mike's not here, okay.
Name an address, you gotta tell.
Okay, on to new business. The street vacation request of Daniel Saylor, 114 Pine Street. And you want?
No, not Roger.
Other chance, Roger.
I'm waiting till he's ready, that's all.
We're ready.
You're ready now?
Yeah, we're ready.
I would like to make the motion then to approve.
Motion by Roger. Second by Mick. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
None? Please take roll.
Commissioner Sminski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioners Lewinsky?
Yes.
Chairman.
Approval of the 2023 meeting calendar. We all have our calendars sent to us.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the calendar? Nope.
No?
Motion? I'll make a motion. By Mick? Except the calendar goes presenting.
No second.
Second by Shelley. Any discussion? Please take a vote.
Commissioner Sminski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewinsky?
Yes. Okay, zoning ordinance discrepancy, parking facility public. Katie sent us quite a list of stuff on this.
Yes.
She's gonna have to go into a little detail.
Yes, so what you're.
Chairman Roger in 2008.
Yeah, I'm hoping we can jog Roger's memory as well on this and see if you have any insight on it because I was recently looking into for a potential development of a parking facility in C3 that it appeared that parking facility public was still the allowable use, but when looking at the definition for parking facility, the special land use standards and several other sections of the zoning ordinance, it appeared that public was removed, so it made me think that the intent was to remove that public from all of the uses within the zoning ordinance because the three districts where it still exists, they weren't really addressed in this 2008 amendment. And, I don't know, with the definition and the special, special land use standards changing, pulling that public out of there, it really led me to believe that that was to be pulled out of the entire ordinance, but I felt it was most appropriate to present that to the commission. And if you guys agree with that, I would get a public hearing slated for the next meeting and we'll get it cleaned up. But, yeah, I just kind of wanted to know your thoughts and if you felt that was the intent and included is the documentation that was from that 2008 meeting, so we have the amendments listed, we have, Denise had even emailed planners to review it and they had a couple comments of changing the use table, which again, further led me to believe that it should have been removed everywhere. You'll see that it wasn't actually removed from the use table, but it was indicated to be removed, so yeah, it's a little bit robust with the documentation that I had given you, but really, it's just identifying what happened in 2008 and where this is still in, you know, the zoning ordinance currently. So if you guys have any questions, I'm all ears.
So is there any potential negative impact for a developer if we remove public from?
I don't think so because public parking facility now isn't even defined in the zoning ordinance. So I would have to go with the general term of that, which obviously, you know, a public parking facility is for the public, but at the same token, I think that that was removed at that time because a lot, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but I don't think developers are really in the game of developing public parking lots, you know, that's kind of something that the city would do. So I don't think there's any negative recourse. The, the particular property that made me question this is wanting to do a more private parking facility and that's again, why I'm like, you know, this does not seem right. I really do think that you have a right to do a parking facility here, but let me pose it to the planning commission and we'll get it squared away. So, yeah, that's kind of my, my thought on it.
It makes sense. I just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Roger, what can you remember of that at all?
I'm trying to jog my memory. I'm going back about 10 years as far as I can jog.
And that's 10 years?
Dang it, we're three years short.
But I mean, I'm getting there. I'll call you when I get there.
Okay.
I think back in that timeframe, they did, the city did think about some public parking places a lot. But I think that.
Well, we were around to push at one point about not, the not having public parking because we were afraid that we were having too much parking that was taking up the green space.
Right.
So then we cut back on the, you know, we weren't as pushing the parking, it's heavy as maybe we should have or but as like Mick said, if there's not a negative annotation by removing the word public, I don't see what would be.
And if, if the city did want to move forward with implementing public parking, you know, government agencies and properties owned by government agencies are technically exempt from zoning, so it wouldn't have any recourse on the city wanting to implement public parking facilities.
And parking is parking.
Right.
So.
Right.
Alrighty, so do you need a motion?
Well.
Yeah, I would like a motion to, to hold a public hearing to amend public out of all mentions of parking facility within the zoning ordinance.
Be appropriate. So somebody want to make a motion on that? Mick did? I'll make the motion that we remove public from the rest of the ordinance. Can you go along with the, head with the public hearing stuff?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Who's second? Marine. Motion by Mick, second by Marine.
Marlene.
Marlene. I was just reading the paper with your other name that's on here.
Well, you're in Mark's seat, he always helps.
I know, I know. We'll just call you, yeah.
Something about this.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Year I joined.
Commissioner Sminski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto? Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes, why?
Commissioner Lewinsky?
Yes. Motion carried. You know, when this, they probably didn't have Word Search.
No, no. Control F, yeah.
Impossible, what are you looking for?
Year I.
Oh, started, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I suppose we could, you could find that out, A.K.
What's that?
Marlene was wondering when we, what year she started.
Oh, yeah, we can probably find that out.
I started off on zoning board of appeals and then Denise moved me into here and there, yeah.
Yeah, she was just wondering, that's all.
Yeah, I can find that out. Heather should have that, so I can email Heather and let you know.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bob.
That's okay, alright. Let's take care of our new business. Onto old business, the zoning amendment request places a public assembly large.
This is after we sat at the work session and decided what?
No.
We took a straw poll and said, and decided that we were going to just let it drop and not change it.
And that's what Mark was talking to me about it too and I agreed with Mark on it when I talked to him after the meeting.
This is the fourth time we've discussed this.
It's a bad move. There's no, there's no good of this, none at all.
Okay.
I just see some, I just see negatives coming out of it.
You want a motion that that affect you now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we deny the request for a zoning amendment. Zoning amendment for public place assembly large.
Second that one.
Motion by Mick, second by Roger. Any more discussion? Well, just, just one thing, when we, when we had our meeting, we suggested that if they wanted to amend their request to allow for banquet and conferencing in that facility, we would consider adding that to the downtown. But, because one of the things that he had said is he would like to do, you know, small banquets in that, in that space.
Right.
Yeah, and.
I don't see that as being as negative and just giving them carte blanche, anything you possibly want. They want to go to bigger things, they can apply for a special use like the Forest Festival does and the Sleigh Bill Parade and all of that.
Specific items. My, my concern is that there's no limit on the large.
Correct. Yeah, once you stay large.
That, that really bothers me a lot.
Yeah, the only reason I say the banquet is I'm assuming that with, well, when we were still looking at the hotel on the end of River Street that they would want banquet facilities and that would be fair and reasonable to expect.
Are they in the same district?
Um, the Gateway Hotel? Yes, but when you come in as a use of a hotel, it really opens up the door for what you can do as accessory uses because per the definition of a hotel, you're allowed, you know, can't have restaurant, conference center, you know, and because that And, cause that was a question that like the DDA, they had a lot of questions on that. Well, what about the Elks? What about the Manassae and Marina? Is this gonna affect them? And really, those existing uses are either grandfathered, or if they're holding events, it's an accessory use to some kind of inn, hotel, you know, something to that effect. So, um, yeah, that's, that's kind of how we ended up with that.
Alright.
Where are you for the vote?
Mr. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
You okay?
I got terrible sinus problems tonight. Commissioner McBride?
You want one?
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Lewinsky?
Yes.
And that closes the old business out. Public comments and communications. At this time, the chair will ask if there are any public comments?
Katie, do you have any?
Katie?
Nope. Nothing from me. I have a little staff report.
Do we not have anyone covering since Jeff left? We don't have anybody covering the meetings?
Oh, I don't think so. I didn't think about that. If they already had a replacement for him. Yeah, he moved to Louisville, yeah.
He's a photojournalist now.
I thought he got a photographer job.
Yeah. Yeah, he was very excited about his move, too.
He was going to Kentucky. It's beautiful, so.
Yeah. He said he's, this is the fifth state he'll have lived in, too. I'm like, you get him.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
No comments or communications? No communication, further communications at all?
Nope.
Okay, staff reports.
Um, yes. So I did have something that I didn't really put into a formal, you know, memo or anything to add into the meeting, but I did have a conversation with the city manager, and he wanted me to pose to the commission their thoughts on amending the ordinance as it relates to detached accessory buildings on corner lots. You know, we have corner lots throughout the city. They come up. It's not a huge issue, at least that I've seen this summer, but it can be more restrictive with putting an accessory building on a corner lot with only allowing an accessory building in your side or rear yard. Cause obviously, when you have a corner lot, a lot of times almost entirely, your yard is a front yard. So if you're not attaching your garage, it can be very limiting where you place your garage. So, that was something that he wanted me to pose to you guys. If you see that as an issue, and really my thoughts on it are that if setbacks are being adhered to, public health and safety is not really a concern. It comes down to aesthetics. You know, buttoning up, if you wanted to pursue this, buttoning up the language in a way that aesthetically, garages in the front yard on certain types of lots, like a corner lot, or like a double frontage lot, are still aesthetically pleasing, or we could just not touch it, you know? But really, it's the main aspect of having an accessory building out, not being in the front yard is an aesthetic thing. So, I wanted to pose, I let Bill know that I would pose that to the commission, and if you guys felt that was something that you wanted to look at or address, that we could look to, you know, hold a public hearing and amend the ordinance for it. Like I said, it, you know, we have corner lots. It is something that's gonna come up for people. I don't think it's something that is a huge issue, but some of you may have more historical knowledge on if that has been an issue in the city. But yes, I wanted to do the due diligence and pose it to you all.
Have you had any citizens come forward with any applications for anything?
No official applications. I have had a conversation with a landowner that may have spurred it. But yeah, it was posed to me by Bill, so.
I kinda have see somebody down the line raising a stink somewhere, so we should have something, just some kind of statement of some type with these corner lots.
What, you can build on a corner lot?
They can build on the corner lot, but the accessory buildings, because you may have, your house is fronting on one street, but your entire backyard is fronting on another street. So, but, you know, realistically, realistically, on subdivision, you're supposed to declare what part is the front of the street. But some places, they're, doesn't say which is the front.
So you have to treat everything as the front.
Sideline, not the front.
Yeah, and I will say, we addressed this in Oneakama Township by defining established front yard and creating some regulation around the established front yard, that that's the yard that your driveway and your house fronts on, and your accessory building can't be directly in front of your house as seen from the established front yard. So there's ways that you can, you know-
Just some manner of language you gotta add possibly to it. Just clear things up.
Do alleys throw a wrench into that?
No, alleys don't count as yards.
Katie, is it possible that you could kind of develop the suggested language first, and then we could kind of address it?
Yeah.
Kind of know what we were really looking at?
Yeah.
My vision, you know, even if they put a fence up on their other side and blocked the accessory building if they wanted to have an accessory building, so it didn't look like a building stuck out in the front of the house.
Right.
So you're the expert on kind of laying up those options.
I talked to Katie, she talked to me about it the other day, and I could think of a few, quite a few places around town where that could take effect. And I think it's all we're gonna need is somebody, somewhere, coming in to throw a monkey in the wrench.
Well, and actually, I know of two places that already, that already exist. However, they have a fence. Where they have an outbuilding and they, but it's-
Right, and we most definitely have existing non-conforming buildings that are located in the front yard, that you'll see them around town. So really, for next month, I could draft, we could not hold a public hearing yet, but I could draft some language for you guys to look at and see if it's something that would be fitting, and we can see if there's any, you know, anything that we need to smooth out with it, just to make sure that it's all buttoned up, and that if we allow for a little bit of leniency for someone, that it will still be fitting for the community and aesthetically pleasing. I do think that also, like, double frontage lots, we don't have very many of them where people own all the way through, but that's another scenario where you have, you literally just have front yards.
Get up into, uh, up in, by, uh, off of North Vade Street near where those old huge block, the houses that take up the entire block.
Right.
Yeah, those, okay, where do you put the, where do you put the accessory buildings?
Right.
Stuff like that. I think we're just gonna, coming up with this stuff, we're gonna head off some can of worms that could come down the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah. So I will, I can do that. For next month, I'll have some language drafted for corner lots and double frontage lots that have more than one road frontage, allowing for accessory buildings to exist in the front yard, given certain criteria.
Yeah, cause I could think of quite a few more. Some of the buildings have actually frontage on all four streets.
Yeah, and that comes up-
Fine, and with the discussion we're having, could we, could I ask for aerial photographs of certain areas that we're talking about, so I can see what-
Visualize?
Yeah, yeah, I can put together some maps.
Even an address where we could drive by and observe.
Well, this is a nice-
Yeah. Well, I could just pull up GIS and I could probably, yeah, I could probably find, you know, four, five, six- Yeah, areas where if someone wanted to put up a detached accessory building, it would be very limited to where they could do it. So yeah, we can have some visuals, and I'll have some language drafted. Yeah, and we did this in Oneakama because they have, you know, a lot of platted subdivisions with undeveloped roadways. And so people have these, you know, paper roads that they're like, "What? I have one road." And I'm like, "No, I'm sorry, you don't." And, yeah, so, not quite the same scenario in the city, but we do have these instances, and it could provide a little bit of relief to those who own those lots.
Yeah, the road is there, but it's on the side of the hill.
Okay, and then-
You can look up.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a road, yeah.
Been out there.
And then, um, at the work session, Marlene had asked about doing a little bit more of an update for my staff updates, and Bill does provide like a city council update every week, so I'm going to pull from that and try to give you guys a little bit more about, you know, what's going on in the city. So I do have from, um, from October, a few things to go off of. So, for the gateway update, you guys may have heard that Little River Holdings is reassessing, and they're on hold right now. So, it's kind of, you know, we can all speculate as to what's gonna happen, but I think it really is only speculation at this point. So we'll see what they might come back with in the future. It may still be the hotel. It may be something different. We'll just kinda have to wait and see. There were, at Sands Park, they got a storage shed put in. Councilman Grabowski's family donated the shed, so everyone was really excited about that. As Mark had mentioned, we had the Founder's Walk put in, so they had the dedication for that, and had a nice ceremony down at the walk. The city has been working on rental inspections with Safe Belts, and they've really ramped it up on enforcement and just making sure all rentals are inspected. I know that, talking with Kevin, they have been issuing tickets and such, so they're on the ball. They're, you know, getting that taken care of. Lighthouse Park, the disc golf course, the baskets have been installed, and I know they did a signature hole that is the lighthouse, which I think is really cool. Whoever put that together, it looks awesome. Let's see. They're, the city's submitting for a Spark grant for the amphitheater at the beach. So I know from conversation that that is going to be very competitive, but the city's still gonna go for it. Hopefully, we get something with that. And then, the police department has been working with the housing commission, helping them with some of their, you know, their issues with, I know that a lot of times 911 gets called to housing commission properties, but it's a property management issue, so the police department has been working closely with the housing commission, and I know that that's been going well, that the communication has been very open and good with that. So, yes, I will try to do these updates for you guys, so you have an idea of some of the, you know, items outside of our purview that are going on in the city.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, and one last thing, Roger. I don't know if you saw, I had forwarded you an email for MSU training updates, and I talked to Mary Riley. There will be a new set of webinar videos coming out, and I gave her your email as well. So we'll make sure to get those to you when those are out.
I mean, like I say, if you can get them, then anyone that could use them at your office.
I think you might have to sign up for it, and I'm not 100%. From what she made it sound like, it was something you'd have to sign up for.
Oh, well, we'll look at it.
But we'll make sure that we get you and whoever else is interested signed up.
Marcus, I think Marcus, and there's probably a couple more here. I don't know.
And that is all I had for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nancy, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Member discussion. Mick?
Um, the only thing I've got is, are we, or have we started issuing tickets for property owners who have failed to comply with the ordinance on garbage enclosure?
Yes. So I worked with Officer Steve Schmeling last week or the week before on four properties. Bill was kinda like, you know, just start getting some of them taken care of. And I actually went out today and yesterday and inspected the remaining dumpsters on the list. So I will have a list. There's probably only about maybe 10 now that aren't either compliant or under permit to be compliant. So I will get those remaining properties to the police department, and we will have all dumpsters, you know, inspected and enforced on. And I did notice that Manassae Beverage still hasn't moved there, so I stopped in there today. And James had let me know that Lindsay has called Republic several times. I'm gonna maybe try to call Republic, too.
Republic, I know, is, for whatever reason, is real behind. They haven't picked up, they're big dumpsters, you know, that people have for, that they've used for, you know-
Demoing houses, yeah.
They've been there, and my next door neighbor's had his for weeks after, and he's called them. So I don't know if they have some kind of an issue.
I've noticed that too, actually, down my street, where I all walk my dog. There's been one there, right.
They're having issues in other cities, too.
Well, there- There was a good point of contact there. He provided a letter for the painted lady. I'm blanking on his name. I wanna say it was like Michael or something.
Oh, I remember the letter then.
Right, and I did hear that he had moved on to another job, so I don't know if he-
Yeah, he was the manager here.
Right, so I don't know if he played a big role, and now they're short-staffed or whatnot. That might be part of it. But yes, we are on it with the dumpsters, and those that aren't in compliance, the remaining, will be contacted by the police department. We are being, you know, the goal is to get them into compliance, so we are being fairly lax, that the officers are saying, if you apply for a permit within a week, and Katie lets us know that you did so, you won't get a ticket. So-
Do you know if the bank building on First and Division has applied for their permit? Cause that's the one that irks me the most. It's, right, it's, you know, smack damn in the middle of town, and it's-
They're demolishing that building right now.
It's not a bank anymore. No.
Yeah, so that-
No, no, I'm talking about on First and Division, where it used to be State Bank, and then it was-
Used to be a Manassae Bank of Trust in there.
Right, but now, you know, it's changed hands, but it's a big building and Spectrum is there.
Yeah.
They have a dumpster right in the middle of the park.
Oh, yeah, that's 84 Division, and that was Larry Bilske who had came in and applied for, um-
The one that's like tilted and-
No, 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 no.
No?
Go to the other, go to the First Street side.
It's, okay, so, it used to be Huntington Bank.
Before Huntington, it was, uh-
And it's-
So that's 71 Division then, right?
No, it would be, I'm not sure if, it might be a First Street address.
Okay.
Right across from, uh-
Yeah, it's right on the corner.
Cause what used to be the Huntington Bank where they're doing construction right now, no?
I think it's across the street from where Huntington Bank is now. Kitty corner? Is it kitty corner from where Huntington is at right now?
Yeah, it's kitty, yeah.
It's kitty corner from where Huntington is at.
Where Huntington is right now.
Right. And, you know, it's a large parking lot.
Straight across the street is-
Large parking lot, and it's-
Is, uh, Callison Management.
Right there in the middle.
I almost wanna look it up real quick.
And it's right underneath a nice bright light, too, so.
Kind of kitty corner, I think.
County commissioner's looking.
And it's not like they was gonna look for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know that there might be some dumpsters that aren't on the list. When Republic had given us the list, they indicated that it may not be complete, and they're not giving out that information anymore. So it was kind of a favor that they had given us a list at all. So there might be some that I, you know, kinda have blinders on as I'm going through town, like looking at the lists.
Keep going.
Right there. Right there.
Right here?
Nope.
Oh.
The other corner.
Other corner. Kitty corner. There, keep going.
Another block south, another block south.
Just keep going, yeah, scroll up again.
Just right there.
South.
Right there.
Right here?
You're going the wrong direction.
No, scroll it up. There you go, there you go. Okay.
So here, there, okay.
Of course, it's Huntington Mortgage Group.
I inspected their parking lot, and, oh wait, no, this, I believe this one is Larry Bilske's 84 Division.
Oh, no, it isn't. Larry Bilske is on the back of Fashional.
Yeah, he's-
Yeah, so he's got it up here. Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's the dumpster. You can see the dumpster.
Okay, yeah, no, this one, yeah, okay, this one was on my radar, and I had thought, cause I have two 84 Division addresses on the dumpster list.
Yeah, cause that'd be Fashional and the, uh, the medical supply there. Larry Bilske's that one.
Right, so maybe they have two dumpsters side by side up there.
Back there.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to, cause I was thinking that this was looped in with his property with the two 84 Division addresses.
There's no reason where they can't put a dumpster enclosure. There's none at all. They've got plenty of room.
I'll follow up with that one and make sure that they are addressed as well, because, yeah, I did think about that one, and then it was confusing me because of those double 84 Division addresses and it being on the backside.
Yeah, cause that building used to be home furniture and appliance. They're a big, huge building till they split into two businesses.
So this may be one that just didn't end up on the list, and we need to make sure that they get it enclosed.
And the dumpster behind off of Clay Street, that was-
Yeah, and now that-
Time, cause it's far enough back and it's right here.
Well, and he is enclosing, actually. He just came forward to ask for two years. So hell's still even doing enclosure off of Clay Street.
Right.
Um, but now that we're looking at the aerials again, I am remembering that that was the area where he had his dumpster enclosure. So I'll make sure Huntington Mortgage Group is addressed. I'm assuming it's theirs. I'll look into it and see who owns that.
Three or four different groups.
Yeah, cause that was one of the first ones that I had thought I was reporting on, and then, yeah, I got confused with Larry, so. Okay, cool. Yep, we'll make sure that one's addressed.
Alright.
Okay. Any more? Mick?
Good job.
Pam?
Um, yeah, I've got a couple of things. Um, the retaining wall there with, at the Gateway Project, they've got poles holding it up.
Yeah.
Kinda scary looking.
I was wondering how long before they actually had to put something there. When I saw them, I'm going, they didn't think of this had time.
It doesn't look very safe. I mean, they just have a few poles holding it up and- The one right on the corner?
Um, right on the corner.
Yeah, right on the corner.
That's something that I can, I can inquire with, maybe, I can talk to Mark Miller and see if he can talk to the developer about that.
Talk to Sean, too, to see what-
Yeah, that's a good idea. Just so we have a more concrete answer of if that is sustainable to remain as it is, or what the plan is with that.
It was kinda scary before they put the poles up, but since they put the poles up, it's really noticeable. Kids can access it from the other side. And the kids, and people can get inside the fences and-
Right.
Once they put the snow pass passing signs up, it became fair game for kids to come in.
Yeah, really.
Well, now that they stalled, or said they're gonna reevaluate the situation, God only knows how long...
How long it's gonna be, yeah.
And something's gotta be there, because otherwise that property that used to be the Topatchka Homestead up there would be falling down the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask Sean about that. That's a good idea, to just ask him and see what his thoughts are.
It had been addressed, and they basically said that their reason was they weren't quite sure on how they were gonna proceed, and they didn't wanna do anything temporary, they wanted to know what they were going to do. But now, temporary is...
Temporary is...
But no matter what they do, that has to be addressed.
And the, one of the other, I've got like four things there, so. Number two is, a couple of months ago, we received a letter from somebody who was concerned about the lighting at the Hampton Inn. We had said maybe she could come and talk to us, because it was a little vague, is, did she?
She did get back to me that she would be willing to come in, whenever you guys want her to come in and speak. I think it kind of slipped my mind, it may have slipped Mark's, but we could see if Mark wants her to maybe come in next month, if he doesn't have someone slated.
Yeah, because I hate, you know, if she's got a good idea that we can pass on to the guys before they get their lighting done.
Yeah.
Which wouldn't be too...
It won't be, yeah, it won't be very much longer, they'll be putting their outside lighting on.
They've already started putting a couple of things up.
Okay. That's, that's okay. The other thing is, you're always asking about the hospital, the old hospital, and I heard that it was for sale for 1.9 million.
Is that possible?
Oh, and no takers.
No.
Well, the housing authorities... It's probably got at least that much of renovation costs, I would think.
And probably at least, yeah.
I don't see any, any large developments anywhere in Michigan until things settle out.
Yeah, the housing authority was looking at the old nursing home hospital. Like 48 units.
It would take a lot of...
There's apparently a lot of demoing that has to go into that.
I think we're facing another 75-point, basis point increase from the Fed.
But we don't, that's where we're gonna find out, and... Other than what we discussed, already, you know, 6% interest and...
I've heard places have hit sad.
Well, I mean, for a big company, they're paying right now at 6%, is probably the best that they can get.
Yeah, no, there's some at cost.
Probably went from 4% to 7%.
And my last thing is, I won't be at next month's meeting because it's the same night as the Victorian concert, and my husband is singing in it, and it's at my church, and I kind of have to work it, so I won't be here at the next meeting next month.
She's been voluntold.
Yeah, I have been, you're gonna dress up and be there again, right? Uh, sure.
Any more, Pam?
No, I'm done.
Okay, Shelley?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Roger?
Yeah, well, to get back to the lighting issue that was brought up, I thought we had advised them, the engineers, there's a company or organization that will come and evaluate your lighting situation to create a very limited lighting, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't know how to explain it.
Didn't they have to submit a light plan?
Yeah, I mean, they submitted a Lumen Plan that meets the city zoning ordinance.
Is this person from, wants to come talk to us, or is it just an individual?
She's a dark sky advocate. I'm not sure how far that title, if she works with a company or whatnot. I think it's more so like a passion.
You're talking about, and I got some...
Yeah.
And I don't know, she knows that there's no lighting on the other side of the building, they're not gonna have the big...
Right, right.
Yeah, I believe we did address it when they were building, because I think you, now you're talking, I think you get an email to that effect.
Yeah.
Because there is a group, as far as the, you know, night sky lighting or something.
But that building being a five-story building, you know, lighting is really...
Well, so it doesn't affect the neighborhood or the outline area, but anyhow, yeah, you're right.
Anything else, Roger?
That was it. Hospital is up for sale. How about the Masonic Temple I see sitting? Does anybody do the Masonic Temple?
I...
It's right here, does it, use it?
I thought it was privately owned.
It is privately owned, and they have no interest in it being developed at all.
At one time, when they first bought that, and they had every electrician in, instead of putting commercial electric things, they put residential. So it kind of messed them up for what they can use the building for. That's what I was told.
Really?
They own that used bookstore downtown.
But they, but they have been, you know, again, exterior work, they spent a lot of money...
Yeah, they do keep it up.
It's a privately-owned building, and I know that Mark is trying to talk to them about development there, they have no interest at this point.
And who, what is it, like you say, who owns it then?
They own the used bookstore downtown.
Yeah.
Which, which used bookstore, Ann's?
Who is it?
Ann's.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, I just, no, that's it, okay, or Bob, thank you.
The only thing I got is, I got approached by Commissioner Grabowski and his wife. They want me to go take a look at the block retaining walls that's going in at the storage units up there, they've got some concerns about it. I told them I'd take a walk and take a look, see how it looks up there. For my point of view on it, as opposed to what their builder would have, and then if I see something, I would pass it on to the city engineer.
There's a lot of the dirt is coming, the grain and that, all that's coming down.
Probably are.
Yeah, so...
There is grass growing there now.
They've got the grass in there now, but we had, when they first planted it, it was a lot of rain that came at that time, but I told Jim, I'd go take a look up there, and I just haven't had a chance to go yet.
What is left on their permits that they've never completed?
All the buildings are up, I think it's really just that mining area, getting the retaining wall.
And that was, uh...
I think in the front, they were supposed to put trees and grass.
They're supposed to have two trees, there's two trees there, they need to be replaced.
The trees they put in didn't make it...
They didn't grow leaves this summer. They'll have to be replaced, and the ordinance does, the ordinance does detail that they must be replaced if they aren't maintained.
I think the trees they put in weren't meant for that soil type.
Yeah.
Very possible, very possible.
They need to talk to our tree commissioner.
Yeah.
Trees that can be planted.
Right.
And they had some for sale.
But are the trees that they planted, were they on the list, maybe?
I don't know what they planted.
And nobody paid attention to what they were, that's the type of soil, tolerant.
We'd have a tree commissioner.
Yeah.
And, and you told me the other day something might be coming down the road on the hotel?
Um, on the lake shore?
On the balcony?
Yeah, we might be seeing, so I have not received anything official, but I have heard that there may be an amendment coming through, but nothing official has been received, so stay tuned.
It doesn't sound that major, anyway.
Yeah, we'll have to see what they submit.
How's that coming along? Pretty good?
The lake shore?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I actually did a tour today, I was gonna grab my phone, but it's up there. I can email you guys the pictures, and I did talk with Tom Welling, as well as the onsite manager. Mark Whitliff had mentioned getting a day set for everyone to do a tour, like, potentially for planning commission, city council, and maybe like the ZBA, and they were all for that, so, yeah, it was really cool.
Looked good when I went by today and seen almost all the insulation.
Yeah, maybe we could do like half, like two...
Three, three, and three, or something like that.
Right, yeah, so we don't have a quorum, uh-huh, yeah, that's a good idea. We could take, yeah, a couple from city council, a couple from each board.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Yeah, and they said, "We're gonna have to get some more hard hats out here," I said, "Yep." There we go, there we go, cool.
That's all I've got.
Good, thank you.
And then Mark's probably tired of listening to us.
Mick, motion made.
By Mick?
A second?
Roger? We are closed.
Have a lovely evening.
Very.
Oh, yeah, I won't be here next month either.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I will be...
Oh, that's right, you're at the...
December 1st.
December the 1st.
She'll be at one thing, I'll be at a continuing seminar at Traverse City.
Good, were you able to hear well? Good, tell him we didn't talk about him too much.
Yeah, tell Mark he owes us all.
Nice, cool. All right, sounds good. Well, you have a good night, and we'll see you when we see you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, bye-bye.
He said he feels fine.
Oh my God, I just remembered like 10 minutes before the meeting was over, that I was cooking bacon, and I had shut the oven off because it was almost done, and left the bacon in there, and I bet it's burning there.
What?
Yeah.
I just started sweating, thinking that I had left the oven on while I say he's upstairs or something, but he didn't call me at all, so I think I turned the oven on and just left the bacon in the oven. I had one of those moments, though, where I was like, "Oh my God, what have I done?"
You put the mirror or the screen?
Yes, have a good night.
Thank you.